... intervention program is a program designed to assist citizens that are experiencing a heating or cooling crisis and the household is determined eligible if they are experiencing a crisis and/or they're in danger of experiencing a crisis if there's a life-threatening or a health or a health-related emergency.
Health-related emergency.
And timely assistance is not available from any other resource. For this program, applications are taken during the month of July through June 30, July 1 through June 30. So we're taking applications all year long or until funds are exhausted. And we take applications at the Department of Social Services from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and they're taken on the second floor at Reception Desk 23. The second program that we have is called the Low Income Energy Assistance Program. Citizens sometimes refer to it as the LIAP program. And it's a federally funded program and we make a one-time payment to directly to the vendors. Back in the day, somebody might have referred to it as the energy check where it was formerly paid directly to the customer, but now we pay directly to the vendor. And it helps with their heating and cooling assistance programs. Formerly, we always sent hundreds of thousands of dollars back. And that's why we came before you tonight to help ask that you would help us get the word out to our citizens. Previously, for the last 16 years, this program was administered by the Salvation Army. This year, we brought the program back to the Department of Social Services and that's one reason we wanted to come and let the citizens know that it's not with the Salvation Army anymore, but you come to the Department of Social Services to apply. And one thing we are doing is this year, on December 7th, we're having an outreach program at Department of Social Services and we are gearing it towards the elderly and the disabled. During the month of December, from December 1st to December 31st, we focus on citizens that are age 60 or above or those who are disabled receiving services through the Division of Aging and Adult Services. And we concentrate on those, but we're doing a massive outreach to them on December 7th. We're taking applications at the Department of Social Services from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And if you ever recall during like the hurricane, if we've ever had a hurricane, you see we do disaster food stamps at Department of Social Services. So we're doing that type of application process for the elderly and disabled on December 7th. So we ask that if you know anyone in need to please ask them to come, especially if they're age 60 or they're disabled, to please come to the Department of Social Services on December 7th from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. because that time is set aside just to service them. And we're making all efforts to get them in and out very quickly. The things that they will need to bring with them is ID, social security number. If they don't have their card, that's fine. If they have the number, a copy of their heating bill and a proof of any type of income they may have. Then during the month of January, February, and March, any other citizens throughout the county can, as long as they're a resident of Cumberland County, they can make an application at the Department of Social Services. And we will be taking those applications from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we just ask that you just help us get the information out to our citizens. Last year, we sent back almost $600,000. And we want our citizens to take advantage of the benefits that are available to them. So we don't want to send back any money. So we want everyone to help us get the word out. I left some flyers back on the table, so if you know of anyone, anyone elderly, anyone low-income, just ask them to please come and take advantage of the funding that is available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have a special presentation. We honor our volunteers and we have a process where you can be nominated as Volunteer of the Month. This gentleman has volunteered 145 hours with Cape Fear Cert so far this year. He is also a disaster volunteer with the Red Cross and he is a chaplain. He is very involved also in our VFW. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Volunteer of the Month to Mr. Mark Bryan. It's this whereas Heroes Homecoming is a way of showing all veterans that we remember and appreciate their courage and sacrifice to defend our great country now and forever. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills honors our veterans and participates in the ceremony memorial services of honoring the many resident veterans. Whereas the events from November 7th, 2019 through November the 11th, 2019, known as Heroes Homecoming 7, will include services at different times and locations throughout the Town of Hope Mills to include Low Country Boil at Dirt Bagels, Hope Mills Fall Festival and Chili Cook-Off at Dirt Bagels, Arm to Stay Bell Ringing and Reading of the Names at the Town Hall gazebo, Annual Veterans Day Ceremony at the Hope Mills Veterans Park, and the Field of Flags at the Hope Mills Veterans Memorial. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim November the 7th through the 11th, 2019, as Heroes Homecoming 7 in Hope Mills, to honor our veterans, the living, the disabled, and the dead, and urge all citizens to join us in honoring them and remembering their service. And I'd like to thank those members of our Veterans Affairs Committee and also Commissioner Bellflowers, who attends, and myself. The Heroes Homecoming is something that we've been involved with at several municipalities in Cumberland County. And it's been a great experience because these communities come together to plan the events. And these are events honoring our veterans and honoring also anybody that's active duty because we want them to know that we appreciate them and a lot of spouses are recognized. So just let you know that this is something that Hope Mills has been involved with for this is our fourth year, I believe. Might be fifth.
Fifth. It's our fifth year.
So we've been involved and we're included because they realize the number of veterans that we have in Hope Mills. And on that same note, I just want to bring to your attention something that I wasn't aware of, and I do want to make sure our community knows this, but Mission BBQ, they have a great program and it's also for police and fire. They call it the Heroes Program. You can go and register and you get special benefits, but on Veterans Day, they actually are feeding the veterans there. And so if you, you know, I'll try to get some information out on my Facebook page and through the, maybe through the town, but I think it's very special that they're honoring our veterans all day long on Veterans Day, free meal. The next proclamation I have is whereas Veterans Day is the day America sets aside to thank and honor all those who served honorably in our nation's military, whereas Veterans Day is the day to honor veterans, to acknowledge that their contributions to our national security are appreciated, and to underscore the fact that all those who have served have sacrificed and done their duty. Whereas America is greatly indebted to those who have sacrificed for the liberty and security of our country, and whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces and hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by the people of the United States. Whereas armed forces members have been unrelenting in battle, unwavering in loyalty, and unmatched in honor, and have demonstrated that freedom is the most powerful force on earth. Whereas VFW Post 10-630 and Auxiliary have coordinated with other veterans and civic organizations in the Hope Mills area to provide the special ceremony of remembrance. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Monday, November 11th, 2019, as Veterans Day in the Town of Hope Mills, in tribute to all the veterans of all wars, the living, the disabled, and the dead, and urge all citizens to join the expression of appreciation to the many veterans in our community who have given so much in our behalf in times of both war and peace.
And Mayor, may I add that the ceremony starts at 3:00 on Monday?
Okay, 3:00 and it will be out by the Veterans Memorial.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Board of Commissioners. Update to the Rockfish Road sidewalk project. FAMPO and NCDOT have given tentative permission to investigate the possibility of constructing a sidewalk on the opposite side of Rockfish Road, beginning across from Johnson Street to Park Avenue. Charles Hughes Construction has been unable to commit to a start on the project while school is in session. Charles Hughes Construction has proposed this idea to McGill and Associates as an option since the traffic plan for the other side was not approved by NCDOT. I would like to get a general consensus from the board as to whether or not you would be in favor of staff investigating this option further. Johnson Street Sidewalk Project, staff is waiting on the fee schedule for the CSX Utilities review. The ADA Transition Program with Stewart Incorporated, staff is continuing to conduct the self-evaluations. In addition, we are researching agencies to fulfill our community involvement requirement. The full survey of the former golf course property is on schedule to be completed by November the 20th. An update on the temporary driveway and parking lot at Golf View Greenway. The surveyor completed the existing condition survey last week and they have begun the design of the parking lot and path to the existing walkway. They anticipate sending public work staff a preliminary design next week and also complete the driveway permit application for NCDOT for the temporary driveway. The ADA signage, mile markers, and directional signage has been ordered. The dual trash and recycling containers. One pet waste station has already been installed, but an additional pet waste station and two water cooler stations have also been ordered. The fall eel migration season has concluded and a report of the findings has been sent to the proper agencies. Representatives of Schnabel Engineering will be taking drone footage of the Hope Mills Lake and Dam on Friday, October the 25th. The demolition of the Fountain Rain House has begun in compliance with our state notification with the removal of a tree so that equipment can be mobilized on site. The remainder of the demolition will take place this week. As I have previously reported, the Town of Hope Mills is working with NC Commerce on a study of the Town of Hope Mills Municipal Influence Area, or the MIA. North Carolina Commerce Staff is currently preparing material for the next meeting with the Coalition built by Planning and Development Staff to study the Town of Hope Mills Municipal Influence Area. Section 1 of the overall plan is being drafted and the North Carolina Department of Commerce Labor and Economic Division is conducting an M-Plan, which is an Impact Analysis for Planning Economic Analysis, which is defined as an economic input-output model for the plan. North Carolina Commerce Staff is also coordinating with Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation Staff to provide data that will be utilized into the modeling of the M-Plan. Once the draft of Section 1 of the plan is complete, the Coalition will reconvene to review the plan outline, review the GIS maps that have been prepared for each of the three focus areas, and discuss when to have the first public meeting, and also to work on the draft plan mission statement. Mayor Warner, Development and Planning Administrator Chancellor McLaughlin, Parks and Recreation Director Lamarcus Morrison, Town Clerk James Starling, and I attended a green growth workshop hosted by the Moore County Planning Department on Friday, October the 18th, located at Waymoth Woods State Park in Southern Pines. The Green Growth Toolbox is a non-regulatory effort led by the Wildlife Diversity Program of the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. The toolbox consists of handbook, a GIS data package, and website access and provides North Carolina municipalities with tools, land use planning methods, and case studies aimed at conserving wildlife and natural resources as they grow. The training provided staff with information tied to three levels of planning outlined in the Green Growth Toolbox: visioning and plan-making, ordinance and rule-setting, and development and design review. Members of the North Carolina Commerce Team that Hope Mills is currently working with to study our MIA were in attendance at this training, which led us to engaging the staff with the Wildlife Diversity Program to not only assist in our MIA study, but to work with Planning and Development Staff on the implementation of changes to the tree preservation section of our zoning ordinance. Code enforcement. During the last week, over 40 code violation notices for junk vehicles, public nuisance, weeded lot, minimum housing standards were given out in the following neighborhoods: Village Green, Fox Meadow, Eaglewood Forest, South Hampton, Johnson Street, Bonny Airplace, Hill Street, Fairway Forest, Banksport Apartments, Meadow Brook, Forest Lakes, Brightmore, Kingsmail, Creek Bend, Friendship, and Woodland Hills. Update on a couple of zoning cases. Case P-1939, a zoning request to rezone 1.12 acres from R-6A and R-10 to CP was heard by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on October 15th and was recommended for approval. This case is set to be considered by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners on November the 18th. Case P-1940, the sidewalk amendment, the case was heard by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on October 15th and was recommended for approval. I have previously reported to you that that case would be heard by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners on November 4th. However, the Cumberland County Planning Department has informed staff that the case is set to be considered by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners on November the 18th. And finally, Sally Bailey has been nominated and voted to serve as the chairperson of the Fayetteville Cumberland Joint Appearance Commission, beginning October 2019 and serving to October 2020. The Board of Commissioners may wish to give a recommendation by consensus to recommend her approval as chairperson for the entire 2019-2020 session. Otherwise, she may have to be reappointed in January. And that concludes my manager's update.
I would like to ask the Board for a recommendation that we approve Ms. Bailey for the full term. Do we have someone that would make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, congratulations.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Let me say, you mentioned the sidewalk moving to the other side of Rockfish Road?
Yes, sir. The construction company is unable to mobilize with school in session because of the restrictions that NCDOT puts on lane closures. So he's offered that as a possible alternative. We've had a conversation with FAMPO and with NCDOT. They've sort of tentatively given us the go-ahead to investigate that. So I don't, you know, I don't know how you all feel about it, but it would...
My idea of the sidewalks years ago was for the benefit of the schoolchildren. I don't know how a sidewalk on this side is going to really benefit schoolchildren without additional crossing guards and things to get them across the street. So I don't know. I guess it would...
Is that just running parallel to the walking track?
No, it would end at Park. So it would run from, directly across from Johnson and come up and end at Park, right the entrance into the Parks and Recreation Department.
So there won't be a sidewalk at all in front of the school?
The other option is my understanding from the negotiations between the construction company and McGill is that he needs to wait until school is out of session, so next summer.
Could he do anything during Christmas? Or is it too cold?
Not enough time to do that project.
By the time he got everything mobilized and, you know...
Is this the same company that's had all this stuff laying over there for two years?
Yes, sir.
What happened to last summer and the summer before? And I know you don't know that answer to that question, but I'm just asking. There was no school then, so why they didn't do it then? He brought this on himself?
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
The main goal of this sidewalk project has always been to provide the children a walkway in front of that school. It's never been about convenience of a choice of which side of the road to put it on. We stay the course. And if we have to find another contractor, that's what we do. But it's, but this is not for the contractor. What we're doing is for the children of that school, children of our community, and that is who we have to look at. Thank you, Commissioner Lake.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I can't see it from here, but on the map for the Rockfish widening, they show, DOT shows the sidewalk actually on, running parallel to our walking trail. And the explanation I was given at the, the meeting that they had held at the school was that it wasn't approved yet that we were going to have a sidewalk on the other side and they were only going to put sidewalks on one side and that will be the side that they put it on. So I'm, I agree with Mr. Bellflowers that, I mean, the main one was that we wanted it on the side of the school. So if they're only going to put it, once they do the widening over on Town Hall side, running parallel to the walking track, that seems kind of pointless.
It's only coming to Park Avenue anyway. I mean, according to what you just told us. So nothing in your presentation said anything about any fronting to the school?
No, if they do do the other side, it is supposed to come up to pass the school or to the, right over in here somewhere. I'm not sure. But the stopping it at Park Avenue was only if it was moved to the other side.
Is there a reason that they give for wanting it on this side of the road instead of the other?
The way the traffic plan, he would be able to mobilize for a longer length of time during the day to work. Otherwise, if he's on the other side, the traffic plan that he proposed, DOT denied it. So it won't allow him to mobilize but only a few hours each day because of school, so...
Say, he just blew two whole summers. He could have been working on it. I agree with Mr. Bellflowers. Maybe we'll start looking for somebody that wants to work. I don't mean that to be belligerent, I'm just saying, I don't want to back up and start over again, but we've had problems with this contractor from day one.
We shouldn't change focus.
So the general consensus is to carry on, carry on with the main grant.
Stay the course.
And the original grant was to go from Golf View to Johnson. So it actually started up at the intersection and went all the way down. Okay.
Ma'am, ma'am, before we move on, there's another issue. I wanted to comment about the walking trail. Okay?
Yeah.
I apologize for not making the ribbon cutting. I was at another event on campus. But I would like to discuss some language change regarding bicycles at, on the walking track, on the Greenway, on the Greenway Park, I guess, is what we're calling it now. Yeah, Golf View Greenway. I'd like to, the Board to consider allowing bicycles on the track as long as they yield for walkers on the track. So the language that I would propose to the Board would be bicycles are permitted but must yield to walkers on the track.
Discussion.
So that's my motion.
All right, you put that form of motion, discussion.
I support that, Madam Mayor. That was my only objection to the approval last time. I don't have a minute.
Commissioner Lake, talk.
I think it's a good idea that we let the bicycles on there. And my only concern was that they wouldn't yield, so if...
Who's going to police them?
They'll have to police themselves or they'll come up there again.
Yes, that's going to be the only, yes, ma'am.
That would be my reason for not going along with it is because unless you have somebody out there to direct them and say that you have to yield, you're going to run into problems. I don't think everybody's going to yield.
Well, who, well, who addresses pets out there? Who makes them clean up after their pets?
Well, I'm not going to follow them.
Call for the vote, ma'am, ma'am.
It just seems like it's putting more work on staff and everything.
All right, we have, we have a motion on the floor to allow, is there anything that was brought up before that there's a concern? I guess I should ask Ms. Adams. I know there were some concerns before. Is there anything that Parks and Rec would have with the concern?
The only concern was Parks and Rec Director Lamarcus Morrison had indicated that because the cart path is, you know, only so wide, but if they, you know, yield to the walkers, then my conversation with Commissioner Bellflowers about it earlier was that we could try it. If it becomes a problem and an issue and we're receiving a lot of complaints...
Yeah.
We can always go back and say they're not permitted.
Yeah. And I agree with you, Melissa, and Mayor Pro Tim, you know, I gave this some thought too after our last conversation. You know, we can, we can try it. You're right, we can try it, see where it goes. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, we can always resend it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to allow bikes up at the Golf View Trailway with the understanding that they'll yield to the walkers. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? So it's 4-1, so the ayes have it.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Next, we have public comments and we have Beth Cooper.
Elizabeth, also known as Beth Cooper, 4413 Goldenrod Court, Parkton, North Carolina, but I am a resident of Hope Mills. I wanted to briefly touch on politics here in Hope Mills. I'm the kind of person that if I say something or I do something, I'm going to do it and own it, that I did it. I recently published two different videos on Facebook about just terrible things and it hurt my heart. I struggled to produce one of those videos because there's a lot of information that I did not want out there representing this wonderful town. But, and there's always a but, our voters need to know who they're voting for. They need to know your actions, what you have done and what you haven't done. You've been in place almost two years now. And I'm sorry, but if the people actually knew what happened at these meetings, y'all wouldn't get elected. There's no way that you can do things like ignore what Pat Hall did, but then prevent Ms. Blevins from being on a board, and she didn't do anything other than speak her version of the truth and own it. She doesn't make any questions about what she writes. She owns what she writes, okay? You don't. As politicians representing the Town of Hope Mills, you don't own what you say. You say one thing and then you do something completely different. You say, oh, we're only going to... You say, oh, we're only going to have people on our boards that are in harmony with the mission of the town of Hope Mills. And then you allow something like what Pat Hall did on the mayor's page of all places. She posted it on the mayor's page. And, you know, y'all just give her a pass. Doesn't the mayor deserve some respect? You're going to allow somebody who represents this town because you allow it do something like that, post nasty, hostile, evil stuff on the mayor's page for all the world to see. That's what you bring to this town. You got a short period of time left up there. I would hate to think that you would use that time for more ill, terrible things. Change your focus. I'm tired of having to hold you accountable for your actions by putting these things on Facebook and by showing up here and calling you out on it every time.
That concludes our public comments. Next, we have a consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda. If there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we may do so. Consideration of approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2019, special meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the October 7th, 2019, regular meeting. Approval of resolution 2019-22, accepting an offer of dedication of public right-of-way. Approval of ordinance 2019-06, declaring a road closure during the parachuting into Veterans Park. Approval of resolution number 2019-23 for disposal of items from the administration and police department. Acceptance of budget amendment number five, addition of $4,675 to general fund from Parks and Recreation Insurance Claim, and acceptance of the September 2019 financial statement. Is there anything you'd like moved? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, like item B pulled, please. Be as boy.
Item B, consideration of approval of minutes from October 7th.
Yes, ma'am.
Now be going under new business.
Be item C.
Which would be item C. Is there any other items that you'd like moved? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with one item being moved, which would be item B? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We have no old business, new business. We have consideration of approval of a bid submitted by Benjamin Stout Construction in the amount of $158,783.90 to perform the modifications to the temporary police station building located at 3,800 South Main Street. And this is behind tab 11. And I guess turn it over to Ms. Adams.
Yep, I guess Chief and Chief Accardo and our finance director, Drew Holland, if there's any questions, you'll be able to answer.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
There's also a representative of the company here too, in case there's some technical questions.
Do we know when the bid process will be going, begin on the public safety building?
They're in the works of designing the building right now, so Drew, do you have an idea? Would be probably what, February? Oh, when, when will the bids be going out for?
Public safety building.
For the new buildings?
The construction drawings are being completed now. The original plan was that they'd be finished December-ish and possibly going to bid January or February.
Our estimated cost still at 15.5 million, or?
Is it?
Our estimated cost for a public safety building still 15.5?
It's going to be between that and 16. I mean, we, that's the estimate. We won't know until we get bids in, but we've, based on the architect's drawings and what he's gotten feedback from folks that he's used before, that's the numbers that, that he's been given.
Any other questions?
But that's not what we're looking at tonight. We're just looking at the temporary, the bid for the temporary facility at this point.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Why is it costing so much for a temporary facility that we're already paying $20,000 in the rear on already? When we rent that, July?
We started in April.
April, May, June, July?
Just for three years.
August. But we paid for the month. We paid for the month. Isn't it $5,000 a month?
It's $5,000, yes, sir.
Add those months up, we're approaching months more money to go on top of this $158,000. What are we doing there? Because when we get to, we'll tear it down. We'll tear it out.
Well, at this point, we don't know if we'll have to tear it out or not. That's up to the owners when the lease is up.
Well, if we don't, that's just improvement. We lose that money. We lose that $158,000. Is there a way that we can get around this without having to spend all that money?
And that's an excellent question. The reason we have gone from when we first started renting it to this point is because we have been working exceedingly hard to get the bid price down. And I have to tell you, the construction folks and stuff, they've been very accommodating with us because as the first low bid came in, which was in excess of $200,000, we went in there and started doing modifications and ripping out everything you could humanly rip out. If, and I, I apologize, I did not download the agenda. So I'm only going off mine. So I hope you guys have a copy of the plans on there. Basically, when you look at this, there is one of the plans that is just the existing building. And that's your four walls.
Yeah.
Then you'll look, and there should be another plan on there that has the actual blueprint drawing. All this is, is walls and a half ceiling. There is no floor. There is no frill. There is only the bare minimum so that we can be statutory compliant with our records retention, our juvenile files retention, and our evidence frame. Everything else is as bare bones as could humanly be done. Some of the things that cropped up during the course of this project was ADA compliance. There were certain things that we just absolutely had to do to make the building ADA compliant for what we're going to be using it for. We're a public, it's going to be a public building. Let me back it up and put it in context. We're basically taking a full-service police station with all that that entails, and we're picking it up, and we're moving it to a temporary site. And once at the temporary site, it's our obligation to be able to continue to provide full-service police services. That means when we seize a weapon or drugs, we're statutorily required to maintain it, guard it, protect it, keep it safe for court. If we do a juvenile issue, a petition, a whatever, statute requires us to keep juvenile files completely separate from everything else. And the only people that can even access those files are police officers. So that means another challenge. So these are the things that we were dealing with. And I have to tell you, the building's owner, Mr. Autry, has been so patient with us. Because we've, some of this stuff, in order to get us ADA compliant, we've had to go in there and do modifications to his building. And he's been very understanding about that. That gets me back to, it's a public building. So it's a public building, you have to provide a public restroom. Public restrooms, or the restrooms, are at the back of the building. So we have, that's another challenge. We have to get the public back to the restroom. Well, you can't get the public back to the restroom and dead-end them out there. You have to give them an exit. So that's one of the things we had to go to. The restrooms that were in there were not ADA compliant. So those have to be modified. So you have to do all this while maintaining the integrity of the other things I just mentioned. And you have to provide for the safety of your administrative staff, who probably 70% of the time are in the building by themselves. And it just is the world we live in today. If you're going to put them there, you have to make sure they're safe. Even in the existing building we have right now, we've had people break out into fights in the lobbies. We had one lady try to run her husband over with a car in her front parking lot. He was lucky. She missed him by that much. Got his car, though. These things happen. So it's a police station. You're going to have admin staff there. If you put them there, you have to make sure they're safe. That means you have to limit the access. So that was another challenge we had to do. Because in limiting the access while providing access to the restroom, you have to get this long corridor to get people to where the restroom is, while they don't have access to the rest of the internal workings of your building. Now, a lot of the stuff that are the day-to-day things, work benches, paperwork areas, stuff like, we're going to do ourselves. We'll do that internally. We're splitting up some of the items that we can store bulk over at the, the new golf course walking park. I'm sorry, I got it wrong. I apologize. But we're going to store those over there. So there'll be some of our folks that will be split, like Lieutenant Sumner's folks. His main operations area is going to be out of the golf course area. We have stuff set up for him to do that when we actually start moving. But, in answer to your question, sir, the price, I'm not thrilled with it. I'm not thrilled that we have to be moving. But this is one step that we have to take to get to the end product, which is the public safety facility. Now, just as a contextual thing, when we started the public safety facility project, that was back in 2017, when everybody got the go-ahead to keep going on, this wasn't an issue. This cropped up after we had already started the journey to get to that end product. And that was the widening of Rockfish Road. And because Rockfish Road is going to be widened, everything with that facility got pushed back. And that's where the end product, the public safety facility, can't get there until we get out of that building. And I can assure you, nobody in that building right now wants to pick up everything and move to a temporary site to pick up everything and move to a permanent site. But they understand that it's a necessity.
Personally, I think that our police department is something that I think our citizens would not worry about us spending money to make sure that you're safe and also to make sure that we have the availability of our police force. I do not, I question having to make you justify everything because this is something that we're very fortunate in, that our police department is excellent. And we know they've got to move, and we know they've got to have the best housing they can have, and that that means spending money to do that. We're going to have to do that. I just believe that, you know, we need to take care of our police department, and I think our public wants us to have the great force that we have. And we don't want to inconvenience you when we move you so that you can't do the job, the excellent job that you currently are doing. And that's just my opinion. I, I just don't believe our citizens, I think anytime we mention public safety, our citizens have come to rally behind you when we needed to hire additional staff. It happened. No one complained. I don't believe that will be an issue now when they know that we've got to do this in order to have a safe place for you while the construction is taking place. Any other comments?
I have one other question. The fiber optics were, have we already paid for the, the fiber optics up there? Or is that included?
That's already been installed and paid for.
How much was that?
That was
$15?
Was it $9,000 something?
Nine, I'm sorry.
That was the PWC.
The other site was fifteen.
There's the sheriff's line that we had to install into the building.
So I guess for this whole project, we're talking around $370, counting the rent that we're paying?
For, for the temporary?
Yeah.
Well, if you're including the, the lease price and the construction in that. And there's going to be some other small things, I'm sure it comes up. But if you look at what we're gaining in this building, or what we're not having to spend on, the secure aspect of it. Sort of got the fencing. It's already got the security that we need. So we don't have to pay. If we had done anything else, we would have had to install a lot of the things to the outside of the building that we're not having to do to this building. The location is a prime area that the police would like to have a presence in. That was also a plus factor in this. If we had done this anywhere else, the cost to add that sheriff's line would have been three times what it costs to put it to this facility. Because we looked at other locations, and we had to rule them out based on those other costs that we're not having to pay here. So any other option that we had looked at before would have actually been more than this. And if it was any other building, even if it was a building that we were to purchase, if we were to use that facility for something else that the town would use in the future, we'd still have to go in and modify whatever we did for this purpose anyways. So there'd still be more costs associated with that in the future.
Drew, are we rolling this up into some debt service? Is it currently budgeted, or it's in the CIP?
No, what we're going to do, once this is approved, I'm going to start working on the capital project budget for the entire project. And then that's going to come to you probably in November or December.
And this will be included? And this will be, excuse me, Mayor.
This will be part of the general fund budget, because we can't fund this through the capital project. Because USDA, we can't make this part of the loan package, because they would have required us to use the same contractor for this as we're going to use for the whole facility. But we don't even know who the contractor is going to be for the full facility yet, because it's not even finished being designed. So we're going to have to separate this. So we have the capital project budget, and then the portion that's going to be in the general fund. And one thing that's going to change that we're going to flip, the lease for the current facility can be paid for by the USDA loan, which is currently in the general fund. So we're going to switch that to the capital project, and then the general fund budget will pick up the cost of this, the renovations to the temporary building.
So the lease pretty much offsets the capital.
It'll be close, not exact, but it'll, I'll have to add some. Because the lease was going to be extended over the whole three years. This is more of a one-time. So we'll just be paying most of it upfront.
Thank you for your work on that.
May I make a motion?
I just have one comment.
Okay, I've got some comments too.
Ready to.
Can it be after the motion?
She can be after the motion. She's requested the motion first.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid submitted by Benjamin Stout Construction in the amount of $158,783.90 to perform the modifications to the building located at 3,800 South Main Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina.
Have a motion, now discussion. Commissioner Larson?
I agree with the mayor that I think that the majority of citizens do not have a problem. I think it's just important to get an explanation of how money's spent so that when they watch the video, that, you know, they're not just seeing $158,000 and us just, you know, saying, yeah, let's do it. And without giving them some sort of explanation of where that money's going. So I hope you didn't think we're drilling you or anything like that.
Of course, anything that we ever bring before you, we've already got to the point that we would not bring it to you if we weren't able to do it.
Right.
As we said before, some of the earlier bids that we have, the reason we didn't bring those to you is because we couldn't do those and we didn't want to do those. So we got it to a point where we can make this work, and so now we're bringing it to you.
Okay, Commissioner Bellflowers?
And I agree with you also, Madam Mayor. Our police department is top, second to none. Our community knows that. Hopefully, everyone in this room knows that. When this issue was first brought up about nine months ago, along the way, we were talking about the temporary building. At that point, I remember it clearly, that I was, I was looking at purchasing that building, knowing that we were going to have to spend some type of money on renovations. I didn't think it was going to be $158,000. I'll just be flat honest with you. So I also noticed that with the $158,000, there's no contingency either. There's no contingency fund at all in this. It's a straight $158,000.
That'll be included when we bring the budget amendment. We're just bringing you the amount by the actual bid.
Oh, okay. So what's the contingency going to look like then?
Recommend, we should do about 5%.
All right.
But as basic as we've got this plan, there really shouldn't be a lot of contingency.
To go up.
Yeah.
I ain't saying it wouldn't. I'm just saying it would be really hard. The designers would be very accommodating to... The designers would be very accommodating to getting the price down to something that's tolerable for the project as a whole. Could happen, but I'd be very surprised if it did.
Well, Chief and Drew, we all know that bids are bids. Things happen, and sometimes cost escalates. It's happened right here on projects that we've had in this town. Are we putting a new HVAC system in for sixteen-two? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
And so, but we're going to leave that when, when we're finished with the lease?
It's my understanding it's going to be up to the property owner.
We may have to take it all out, or we may get to leave it as it is.
And twenty-five thousand for electrical redesign as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Keep in mind, and that's actually, it's an excellent question. Keep in mind, you're going to be putting in about twenty workstations in various forms with computer, server, video monitoring, that sort of thing. The current electrical system in there now will not handle that.
It just, we're doing a lot of work on this building to continue the lease for three years. To move from that building back to a permanent building. Really would be nice to keep it, wouldn't it? Really would be an alternate location for our outstanding police department.
Mayor Warner?
I'm good.
You're good?
Right, all those, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed?
You're opposing?
No, I'm for it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You can't be held down.
Thank you very much, sir.
I was going to add something to it, that's all right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you kept your hand down.
All right. Next thing under new business is consideration of addition would be discussion of possible action repairs to the Veterans Monument?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe at the last meeting, Commissioner Bell Flowers had brought this issue up, that the monument needs some repair. And so, we had, I had forgotten to place it on the agenda, and I apologize, so we've added it as an addendum. I believe what he's looking for is for you all to direct me to have the public works staff, Public Works Director Don Cisco is very familiar with the issue with the monument. He has been to the veterans' meeting, he's discussed it with them, and I think he would like for you all to direct me to have him investigate the cost and bring that forward to you all for repair.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll just add in that at the last Veterans Affairs Committee meeting, and we'll have another one this week on Thursday night, there's been a number of cracks in the monument that need some repair. Don and his team looked at that and made an evaluation of it. The issue is, there's no one locally that really works on the monument. So it's going to be, there's one, there's one company in South Carolina that installs monuments, and they fix monuments and repair monuments. So they felt, they being Don, felt they didn't want to proceed unless there was a consensus of the board to direct our town manager, the green light, them calling this company down in South Carolina and having them come up and look at it and see what they can do to repair it. It's either we repair the monument or we're going to lose the monument. That's where it's at. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Bell Flowers, do you think, obviously Veterans Day is right on us?
Yeah.
So, is it, is it in such a shape that we need to get it fixed before Memorial, I mean, before Veterans Day?
No, no, but it's, it's a maintenance issue, it's, there's some cracks in it that need to be addressed. It's not, it's not like it's going to fall down today or even the next two weeks, but it's going to have to be addressed. And, and that's why they wanted the direction of the board.
So we're just asking to authorize the town manager to investigate what could be done?
And bring back quotes.
Bring back quotes.
That's all that it is.
I will make that motion that we authorize the town manager to, to make that contact and bring a quote back to us.
Okay, have a motion, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed? Next item is the minutes from October the seventh.
Madam Mayor, just had a quick edit on the, when we voted on the Golf U Greenway for walkers, runners, and dogs, and, but no bicycles. I had explicitly stated my reason for voting no was because of the no bicycle element in that, and it's in the minutes, it's in, it's in audio, I would like that explicitly written there.
How would you like that to read?
Just, well, it's on the audio, but I just basically said that I couldn't support the motion because I do believe that bicycles should be allowed, and of course, we passed that already tonight. And I appreciate my fellow commissioners allowing that tonight. So, if we can make that one edit, then I'll be good with it, and I'll make a motion to approve those minutes from October the seventh, two thousand and? Or you need to bring it back? Bring it back, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then, I'll withdraw my motion then. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for future reference, when you receive your agenda, you could at that time have requested this, and then she could have made that correction before the meeting tonight and could have included that correction in the agenda item. So for anyone that finds something like that, if you'll just notify Ms. Starling, then she can make that, take, take care of that prior to the meeting. Okay, next we have, we have items, reminders, Appearance Commission coming up, Veterans Affairs Committee, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Trucker Treat on October thirty-first, and then the, our next meeting is November the fourth at seven PM. Any staff comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, official comments, I'll start with Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Mayor, there's two things I want to address in my official comments.
Okay.
One of them's a little long. First one is that there's an organization that's going to be looking at, on a walkthrough of the parish house as a community project, and that organization is Fayetteville Technical Community College. The construction department on campus will be scheduling a meeting to review and walk through the parish house as a possible project for our community college students, beginning in the spring, where all three departments will have the opportunity to work on the parish house. Now, that's the labor piece. Now, the materials piece will not be provided by the campus. And this also follows about the same footprint that some thirty years ago, a partnership between the town of Hope Mills and Fayetteville Technical Community College resulted in the new, that police house, not new, at that time it was, the police station that we have now. That was the partnership some thirty-five years ago, was that the community college students would build the police station, which they did. Senator Tony Ran at that time went to the GA, General Assembly, and he authorized General Assembly, or he begged them, for the money for the materials. Materials was delivered, college students showed up, and they built the police house, and it stood out there for thirty-seven years. So the same opportunity is before us now, to, to look at the parish house. And I just want to say that it's a, it's a pure partnership of opportunity to save a ninety-year-old historic building, if it can be saved. And it, and who better to work on something like that and to learn something from that parish house? Because if you look at all the, the damage that's in it, it's plumbing, it's roofing, it's electrical, it's HVAC, it's everything, and it's all in one building. So I just wanted to make note of that. Second issue, and I wasn't really going to talk about this, but I am. And I beg the board's understanding. Since our last meeting, there's still been issues and references, and even tonight, the comments made by Pat Hall. I called Pat Hall in the past couple of weeks, and I'm going to read you what she said. I wrote it down. I called her about these comments on Mayor Warner's Facebook page. And during our conversation, here's what Pat said. And she's out of town, by the way, until late November. She said she's not a racist, she didn't post racist comments. She forwarded her comments by messenger and did not post them. She told several people that she thought her Facebook page had been hacked several days before these comments ever showed up. Comments were directed toward the mayor and only Mayor Warner. In fact, she said she had a conversation directly with Mayor Warner about these comments. And Mayor Warner knows full well the comments were directed to only her. After learning about the posted comments, the comments were removed immediately from the Facebook page. She deeply regrets this ugly situation, sincerely apologizes to the family in the photo that she said she never saw and only knew about these comments that she sent by messenger.
Commissioner Bell Flowers, just so you know, I have not spoken to Ms. Hall in reference to any of this, she has not spoken to me about this.
Well, I'm just, like I said, these are the comments that she told me over the phone.
Okay, well, put that in the record, that she has not talked to me.
Okay.
I was at Old Mill Day's reunion, she had an opportunity there, she could have said something, she hasn't, she said nothing. So there's been no, no comments.
Well, I just wanted to share the phone call that I had with her. There'd been some questions that this wasn't going to be addressed, or, or even a phone call made. So I made the call myself, and this is what she said. And I just wanted it on the record, too, Mayor, that this is what she told me during our conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
I wasn't going to say anything, but now that there's other things to be mentioned and all, I was going to make a statement before the final vote on the Police Service Department. I was just amazed by some of the questioning, some of the questions that were asked to our chief and, and the police department. They have been waiting for years for something like this to, to happen and to improve the situation, and, and they've really been very, very patient about it. And for anybody to question anything that we're doing right now, based on all the money, the frivolous money that we have spent in the past two years on nothing, it has gained nothing from it, I just thought it was, I just didn't think it was just right to question Drew or the chief on any of this. That was just my comment.
Okay, Mayor Prothean?
Couple of things, information from Social Services, Town Manager Adams, is there any way we can somehow promote their programs through our social media? Either through the Hope Mills Administration?
Provide a link.
She mentioned that one date on December the seventh, to be crucial for the energy program. So that would be good. In regards to the police department temporary situation, I've, I've never considered us a rubber-stamp board. So we're here to represent the citizens and ask questions, and to clarify, you know, still a hundred and sixty grand of taxpayer money, you know, for us just to rubber-stamp something without asking questions would be irresponsible to our constituents, and they deserve better. And then also, I'd like to thank everybody that came out for the ribbon-cutting at the Golf U Greenway. We hope the citizens will enjoy that space for walking and, and now children on bicycles can also ride their bikes out there with their parents or their siblings. Anyways, that's all I have, appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
We had a great turnout, thank you for the staff for getting the golf course ready and, for the chamber, for their participation in it as well. It was a nice turnout, it was nice to see all the families coming up while we were all out there, so. I will reiterate that it would be irresponsible not to ask for fiscal responsibility to ask the questions, and the people have a right to know where the money's going for. If, if you don't ask, then, then you get criticized for not asking for why one hundred and fifty thousand dollars was spent on something. It's their money, they have a right to know what it is.
Commissioner Lay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't quizzing anyone in particular. When we spend that much money, we need to know exactly where it goes, and what we had to do for that, because this has been drug around and beaten around for seven or eight months. And I think the police chief knows it, and the fire chief as well, that I'm one hundred percent behind them as an elected official. As they want us to spend money that we might need at a later time, if we can get it done for a, a little lower price, to get us some temporary housing over for, for our police department. You can certainly tell it's election season with all the trash and mud that's been thrown. I won't do it, I promise you. I won't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, again, thank you everyone for coming, and today I was fortunate enough to attend, along with Commissioner Bell Flowers, FTCC's partnership with Cumberland County and the, the local fire departments. Chief Hodges and Chief Lopez were there representing us alongside of the two of us, and they're going to have a training center out on Corporation Drive, and it's going to be one of those places where we can get the training that our department needs, but regionally also. So it's a great event, and they, it's a partnership, too, because they've come up with the money from the county and FTCC to do it. Tonight I had my first meeting with the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, it's a combination this year of Key Club, SGA, and RITC. They're going to be, their project this year is Hope Mills Beautiful, and they're going to also work toward gateways which at, at their school that they can beautify. So we're going to adopt highways and do some things with litter suites. Again, appreciate you coming this evening, and we have a motion?
Can I do it?
Thank you, I have some, thank you, I got lots of it. All right.